... Court to order on this day, October the 3rd, 2023. We have Brother Brent Williams here today to say the prayer for us and then we'll do the pledge to the National State Flag.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for the day, thank you for everything you've given us, but most of all, we just pray we take you up on your command, said, "Do not worry about anything, but in everything," with prayer and supplication, with thanksgiving, "to make our request known before you, so that the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, would keep our hearts and minds in Christ." Let us take that serious today, and in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank y'all for coming this morning. First item of business, we'll take action on the minutes from the previous meeting of Commissioners Court on September 26, 2023. Are there any omissions, corrections, or additions to the minutes?
Here and now, I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from the previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on September 26, 2023, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the previously held Commissioners Court on September 26, 2023. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Number two, consider and take action to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County. And I believe we have a pretty good crowd here this morning. And Ms. Cooper, would you like to come up and read the proclamation and give us any information that you have?
I want to start out by thanking Commissioners Court for allowing us to come and to present this proclamation yearly. It's a sad thing that we have to do this, but it is an honor to have a county, as we do, that allows us to come and do this and to speak for victims of domestic violence. In recognition of the important work of domestic violence programs, the victim service providers, and the survivors, we urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the East Texas Crisis Center and other community organizations in the endeavor of eliminating domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence is not confined to any one group or groups of people, but crosses all economical, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal boundaries, and is sustained by indifferences, has wide range effects on individuals and society as a whole. And whereas the crimes of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas more than 12 million women and men are victims of rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States every year, averaging 24 people per minute, the prevention of these high numbers of domestic violence occurrences requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. And whereas one in four women, and one in, I'm sorry, one in three women, one in four men have experienced contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas 30% of children exposed to intimate partner violence has had their first exposure before the age of two, and an additional 26% has had first exposures between the ages of two and seven. And whereas victims of domestic violence are more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health concerns, including a higher risk of chronic disease, substance abuse, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, anxiety, and risky behavior. And whereas local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence, and to eliminating it through prevention and education. And whereas important partnerships have been formed among criminal agencies, healthcare providers, allied professionals, and victim services to assist the victims of domestic violence and their families. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of these individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence and works to increase public understanding of this significant problem, we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from the appropriate victim service organizations such as the East Texas Crisis Center. And whereas Henderson County joins with others across Texas and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated. And whereas victims should have help to find compassion, comfort, and healing that they need, along with the support services, so that they can safely escape the cycle of abuse, and their abuser should be punished to the full extent of the law. Some of the numbers, and I'm not going to do a whole lot of them, but with the systems like Google has allowed to be on the internet, searching for domestic violence shelters, hotlines, and just receive help has increased. On the total calls, chats, and texts received in 2022 to a domestic violence hotline was 775,073 nationwide. Between October 22 and September 22, East Texas Crisis Center received 4,791 of those hotline calls. From November of 22 to August of 23, East Texas Crisis Center as a whole has assisted 3,592 individuals of domestic violence and sexual assault.
Well, thank you for continuing to bring this forward to keep everybody informed and aware of the problems that remain out there. And also, thank you for everybody that's here with you today, because I know it's emotionally and mentally tolling on y'all also. So we appreciate the work y'all do, and we appreciate you continuing to bring this forward and keep it in everybody's mind, so that we continue to remember that it's a problem.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, Commissioner Spivey?
Just thank y'all very much for all you do for Henderson County.
Thank you. We have a wonderful county.
Thank you. I'm glad that all y'all do this and that people have a place to go to, to speak, and let people know that if there's issues, whether it be the victim or somebody else that calls and reports it for them, that there is a place for them to call and try to get them help.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to proclaim October to 2023 Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Henderson County.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. What we'd like to do right quick is, I know it'll take a couple of seconds, but we'd like to get y'all up here in your group and take a picture, because I know most of y'all have to go back taking care of the business that y'all take care of.
Okay. And we've got listed with the Henderson County Health Center, who provides services to the children, and then to adults in sexual assault, we've also got family health center.
Anybody you have with you.
I would.
Bring them on up. Y'all come on up, and we'll get a picture right quick.
Thank y'all.
Number three, consider and take action to proclaim the week of October 1st through 7th, 2023, as National 4-H Week in Henderson County. I know we have Ms. Carolyn Tyler, Ms. Angela Hempstead here today, so if you'll come forward and bring the guests that you have with you.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. It is National 4-H Week, which is very exciting. For those of you who do not know what 4-H is, we are the largest youth organization in America and the world, and we teach kids to make their world better. Our pledge is, you know, head, heart, hands, health. We use our head for clearer thinking, our heart for greater loyalty, our hands for larger service, and our health for better living, for our club, our community, our country, and our world. And we try to give the kids the skills to be the leaders for tomorrow, because these youth are going to be our leaders. So we want to make them as successful as possible. In Henderson County, we've been around since the 30s, 1930s. I guess I should specify that now, since we're getting closer to the new decade. We, last year, we had about 257 members, and we're hoping to grow that some this year. We also do curriculum enrichment in the schools, teaching them about ag literacy, making them aware of where their food comes from, because that's also very important. And we were able to reach over 1,800 children in Henderson County with that last year. I did bring some of our 4-H County Council officers to share with you their 4-H experience and to let y'all have a little bit more awareness of what we can do. Well, when most people think of 4-H, the first thing that they think of is livestock, and I am part of the livestock, but that is not all that 4-H is about. I am a part of a shotgun club that regularly shoots, and we have gone to state multiple times, and that has really helped me improve my skill. I'm a part of a robotics team, and we work and teaches us problem-solving skills and how to work together in a team. I'm a part of food nutrition, and that helps us with an important life skill. And I believe that 4-H helps with growing kids into functional adults. Thank you.
And what was your name, so everybody in here will know you?
Jack Tyler.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bryce Parrish. I am this year's Henderson County 4-H Council President, and I am also the 4-H Club Council Delegate for the Brownsboro 4-H Club. I'm also a senior at Brownsboro High School. I have been a part of 4-H for 10 years now. This program has certainly allowed me the experience of a lot of things. I started out in archery and then moved towards market rabbits. However, my main focus, as I've gotten older, has transferred to breeding lambs, market lambs, robotics, and fishing. My lamb project has given me a hands-on approach since I have been breeding my own. I will have the opportunity to show two of my own home-grown's this year in the Henderson County Livestock Show, which I've been able to raise from the very beginning. I am also the senior captain of our 4-H robotics team as well, where we have been expecting a lot of upcoming competitions at several of our state majors, such as this week we will be competing in the state fair. This year, I've also participated in the virtual reel-and-man fishing tournament this spring and summer. 4-H has allowed me a lot of opportunities, but most of all, has taught me how to be a better leader, communicator, and mentor. Over the years, I've also had the opportunity to devote countless hours to serving my community. This year, I was selected as the Henderson County 4-H I Dare You Award, which was the last award I needed to complete as a senior in 4-H. I would like to take this time to thank all the commissioners for allowing us to come speak with y'all about our 4-H journeys and opportunities that the youth here in Henderson County has been given. Thank you. Do y'all have any questions?
We will.
Well, good morning. Good morning. Y'all can talk to me. My name is Amelia Abney, and I am the Vice President of the Henderson County 4-H Council. Now, if you recognize me, it's because this is my third year to have the opportunity to come and tell y'all about 4-H in Henderson County and my experience with it. So I hope you can make it through one more round unscathed. Since I'm doing public speaking right now, and it happens to be one of my favorite facets of the program, let's begin there. 4-H puts a great deal of emphasis on public speaking, and when I first started the program, contrary to now, it was my least favorite part of the program. Now, don't get me wrong, I have always been talkative, and too much so for my own good, if you ask my mother, but talking in an organized, understandable sort of way in front of a group of people that I was unfamiliar with was my worst nightmare and a dream come true for my mother. So as you can imagine, I said, "Yes, ma'am," and started participating in public speaking opportunities of all kinds. Last year alone, I addressed this council, the Athens branch of the Kiwanis Club, the local branch of the United Way, and I was the keynote speaker at the Athens Farm and Ranch Tour, all in support of 4-H. And I'm very excited to see what opportunities come my way this year. Now, the only thing that 4-H puts more emphasis on than public speaking is leadership. And I think that the amount of leadership present in the 4-H program is extraordinary when compared to similar youth programs. And the reason for that is that 4-H is a youth-led program, so there are never-ending opportunities for kids to take on some responsibilities and learn. Now, in just my first year of 4-H, they allowed me to give presentations to my club about my nonprofit. In my second year, they elected me secretary, and in my third, I was completely in charge of the fashion and interior design table at our county-wide open house. Now, I'm the president of the county, or the vice president of the county, I misspoke, and I'm in the process of putting together an Athens 4-H Club. We had our first meeting just last night, and I'm really proud to report that things are going well, and I think it's going to see a lot of growth. Now, you might be wondering, how does 4-H convince kids to do all of this leadership and public speaking that's so intimidating even to adults? Well, the way it does that is that it packages all of the life skills it teaches into these neat little presents called projects, and entices kids into learning, say, how to sew, how to shoot a rifle, how to improve their cooking skills, learn how to judge horses, and then shoves in the rest of that leadership and public speaking once it's too late. So I've been in the fashion and interior design project since I joined 4-H in 2016, and in that time, I've made a lot of progress and a lot of projects, including the skirt that I'm wearing this morning. And the skills, both fabric-related and speaking-related, that I've gained during these years have enabled me to, in the past, teach a two-year-long sewing class, run the fashion and interior design table at our county open house, as I mentioned, and run more than five county-wide textile-related community service projects. The experiences kids have in 4-H extends to other areas of their lives before they even graduate. For example, I was a teaching assistant last year with, along with 15 other high schoolers for a very large online class. And because of my experiences in 4-H, I was able to cut down on conflict, be professional, and delegate responsibilities along with my fellow TAs, so that when the year was over, our teacher told us that we were the best group of TA she had ever had. This year, I've stayed on with the class, and she's asked me to become the lead TA managing about 15 other high schoolers to help provide resources to students in the class. Now, I don't mean that as a positive reflection on myself. I did not come here to tell y'all how neat I am. This is a positive reflection on 4-H, and just one example of what the program has done for me and so many others, to give us the room to do what we need to do to rise as high as we can. And with 4-H, the sky's the limit. Thank you. What questions can I answer for y'all?
Thank you, and once again, it's refreshing for a group of young people to come up and speak in front of a crowd, to give us an idea of what extension in the 4-H is. It's not just, it's evolved way beyond agriculture. I mean, it's great that y'all come in here and let everybody know, I mean, the stuff I wrote down, and just quickly, but livestock, nutrition, communications, and public speaking, fishing, shooting sports, leadership, I mean, like you said, the sky's the limit. So thank y'all for coming in and letting everybody know what the 4-H is all about now, and bringing in a good group of students like y'all that do a great job representing it.
It's our pleasure.
Anything else? Commissioner Richardson?
I just want to thank y'all for coming and looking at how much y'all have grown over the last three years, and y'all's public speaking and stuff, and doing a great job. And I can see you one day in something special, where you're going to be a teacher. You'd be a great public speaker.
Well, thank you.
And a lot of people could learn from you. And I don't know if Angela, if you have anything to do with it, but I noticed in the paper here a while back, that y'all even went into the Athens Christian Academy private school, and they've got a 4-H now at the private school, so.
Yes, we actually have pretty groups this year starting off. We have one of the private school, and then the Athens 4-H Club, and we're working with one of the staff with Dish Hatcher, who are doing outdoor education club this year. So we're actually growing and expanding our project base and our outreach.
Thank y'all.
I need to sign up for class for you. And also, 4-H has scholarships that's really good that no one mentioned. My daughter was one of the $20,000 scholarship recipients in 2017. So y'all did really well today. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to proclaim the week of October 1st through 7th, 2023, as National 4-H Week in Henderson County.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to proclaim the week of October 1 through 7, 2023, as National 4-H Week in Henderson County. Those in favor? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank y'all very much for coming. We would like, if y'all need to leave, we'll get a picture now, but if y'all are going to stay for the meeting, we'll get a picture afterwards.
We should all be wonderful.
Okay.
One way we can do this. You're welcome.
And I was, just for everybody's information, I forgot to mention this at the beginning of the meeting, but as I was standing there in Judge McKinney's spot, I thought about it, but Judge McKinney is out with some, an engagement he had with the North and East Commissioners and County Judges Group, and then Commissioner Tulley is out also today. So that's why you've got the pleasure of having us. Number four, consider and take action on proposed 2024 holiday schedule for Henderson Are there any questions about the holiday schedule? Angela, pretty much the same holidays that we've had in the years past, so I don't think there's any changes that have been made. We just have to okay the schedule. Do I hear a motion?
If there's no, I propose the 2024 holiday schedule for Henderson County.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt the proposed 2024 holiday schedule for Henderson County. Those in favor? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Number five, consider and take action to accept the fiscal year 2023 State Homeland Security Program regular projects. Jessica?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Court. Today, we have received the funding for the fiscal year 23 State Homeland Security Program. We applied for this funding in order to assist our local volunteer fire departments upgrade their mobile radios. We have been awarded $45,231 to assist with these purchases, and there is not a match for the funding. We are hoping to provide about 35 radios. I don't have an exact number for you today, because of course, pricing has changed since we originally applied, and Jody is working on getting that information. And we will not be providing radios to all departments. There are some departments that have already received assistance with getting radios. So we're looking at between 11 departments will be receiving this assistance out of our 22 volunteer fire departments.
Are there any questions? Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the fiscal year 2023 State Homeland Security Program regular projects. It's $45,000?
$45,231. That's it, yes.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, consider and take action on updated memorandum of understanding for access to the East Texas interoperability network between Henderson County and entities that provide law enforcement and fire service.
Good morning.
Jody?
This is an MOU that we put together for all of the entities within Henderson County that want to be on our radio system. I believe we put this one together back in '21. The only changes we made to the MOU was we took out a fee that we had in there originally that we decided not to charge other entities, and then we added a designated contact from each department, so that we only have one person from each department to deal with. Other than that, everything's the same, just the updated date at the bottom.
And this is, so pretty much the same memorandum of understanding that we had already put out, and this is pretty well just done to protect the integrity of our system.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Sheriff, if you've got anything to offer?
No, sir. I think these two changes are going to make things easier, make things more streamlined, where the other entities are going to know how to do a whole Jody tour easier, and actually think on the other change, and I'll drop that on the beat, but I think we can help people on the system, and what would we do about initial losses.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the memorandum of understanding for access to the East Texas Interoperability Network. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Number seven, consider and take action to assist Shelby Chapel Cemetery with repairs to the drive at the cemetery. And that is in Precinct 3, which is my precinct, and as you can see, it is a historic cemetery. It is operated by a board, and they need for the precinct to come down there with the boomaxe and just clear some limbs where they can access the cemetery without scratching the vehicles up and everything. And we've done this before, and just bringing it back to court, so everybody knows what we're doing. Any questions?
This is on the Shelby Chapel.
Yeah, this is Shelby Chapel, which is right off 1616. Yep, this is Shelby Chapel, which is right off 1616. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to assist Shelby Chapel Cemetery with repairs to driveway at the cemetery.
I'll second.
Been moved by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey that we assist the Shelby Chapel Cemetery with the repairs to the drive at the cemetery. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Number eight, consider and take action to assist the Black Jack Cemetery with washout repairs and tree limb removal. And this is pretty much the same thing, they just need somebody to come in and trim the tree limbs back where they can get the cars to the cemetery, and then they also have some, a few potholes that we can fill with recycled asphalt. Are there any questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to assist Black Jack Cemetery with washout repairs and tree limb removal in Precinct 3.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson that we assist the Black Jack Cemetery with washout repairs and tree limb removal. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Consider and take action for donation of non-palatable lake water to be used for road construction on County Road 4528 from John R. Grove to Henderson County. And this is in Precinct 4. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court. We're wanting to get water from the lake to assist in water in our cement that we're going to put into the base of the road. Right now, nobody's wanting to get water. It's kind of lacking right now, and we finally found a guy that would donate water to us, and we're just taking this action through court to go through all the procedures for a donation.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved to accept.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the donation of non-palatable lake water to be used for road construction on County Road 4528 from John R. Grove to Henderson County.
And that's with the judge's authorization to sign.
With the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 10, receiver financial reports. We have none. Number 11, consider and take action on payroll distribution, discount cash sheets. We have none. Number 12, consider and take action on submitted tax. We have none. 13, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. And I, Precinct 3 does have one of those. It is Charter Spectrum Fiber Optic Cable, County Road 3913. That's an easy one there, just one road. 1,700 feet of underground conduit and three volts. And once again, this is the high-speed internet fiber optics that they're laying. I know a lot of people seen them moving around the county, so it's coming, it's just in Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve for Charter Spectrum for fiber optic cable on County Road 3913 with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second.
Been moved by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to accept the Charter Spec Notice of Proposed Utility Line Activity for Charter Spectrum on County Road 3913 with the commissioner's signature to approve. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number 14, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments?
Now that we've survived the 2024 budget, yes, I do have those reports up here.
Are there any questions on the budget amendments?
I have no questions.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spivey and approved and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the budget amendments. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 15, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, sir. We have fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $254,747.48.
Are there any questions?
No questions.
I have no questions.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $254,747.48 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Been moved by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills for $254,747.48. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider and take action on submitted plans. Open and consider bids. Number 18, consider and take action to adjourn.
I moved that we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank y'all for coming today.